We're gonna start. It's almost four thirty. Thank you for attending the special meeting of the City Council. We have to go over all the...
Councilmember Limprous is absent. Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Wiest, Vice Mayor Degolia, and Mayor Woodman.
Okay, Mr. Limprous will just be a little late, so not going to be absent, but he'll be a little bit late. Okay, so we have only one topic on the agenda that said public comments during the special meeting have been related to the item on the agenda. The item is updating the general plan. So do we have any public comments with regards to the general plan?
Yes, we do.
Okay, please step up and say who you are and make your comments.
Okay. And I do have associate documentation as necessary to make additional comments available later, as we did.
Great.
Someone who I know, and nice to see you again. I'm new to you, or maybe you've met me in other ways. My name is Jenny Benray. I live at ninety-six Stallone, Bryan Avenue. I have my family here tonight. Proud to have them. So let's get started. Good afternoon, or maybe it would have been. But it's time to talk about some inconvenient truths about going green for greenwashing. As rare as it is for me to speak up, I can't be silent or silenced anymore. I'm here to sing tonight from the quiet part loud. I have a document in front of me in various guises, electronic, or what might have printed out, to examine about land use and perhaps misuse. And it goes to the heart of green and greenness and what it will mean in this town and in the century and neighbor to neighbor. The documents outlined on greenness are built not in spite of, but because of, and in service to, of a betrayal of the fully demonstrated promise of the town's tree canopy. As endlessly referenced in the planning document under discussion tonight. Your own planning document represents and references Abboton's canopy virtues while your planning department, bathroom, and front stabbing processes and propose a desecration of the heritage tree ordinance. Gives an unmistakable and long-awaited formal green light to let private party tree destroying owners off the hook with the town's disease blessing. Would you like to fit it on topic, sir? What to make of this in light of ongoing egregious subversion of the law for private gain by neighbors, especially our neighbors, with the town's air cover? Sadly, our family speaks from experience to all the nonsense of your documents and efforts. Eric and Ann Harrison, one fifty-six Stockbridge, have egregiously dealt with me in such a way that I felt extremely threatened on several occasions. The fact that Eric Harrison of this address I've just mentioned told me that he could go to the Abboton City Council anytime to get whatever he wants includes, which is true and not limited to, almost certainly killing off through gross negligence a shared heritage owed tree. Eric's arrogance is in fact our green. If what I, your average town resident, has experienced at his hands is true, he and his darlings have trained their sights on an inconvenient heritage tree, and if true, he has managed to marshal and co-opt town officials and resources into getting trenching, root destruction, and watering on the menu for a shared majestic owed tree, such that it will almost certainly be lost. If you think this is off-topic, I assure you, I think you mention canopy, heritage, and other words more than fifty times in your document that we are reviewing tonight. What a sick joke of screening plan that has been put in place. It will never obscure his own sad, private incarnation of the Miami-As. You mean, take our word for it, our respective consulting arborist, whose report I have tonight and whose expertise is endorsed by the town arborist, is aghast by the apparent lack of protection for and imminent destruction of said tree, and more. If they... I'm sure there's nothing in the fact that Eric Harrison has co-sponsored councilmember Rick Degolia and his right for membership of a prestigious country club that costs a third of a million dollars to join. Now, that's a lot of green. But I'm sure if true, it's all a coincidence, and I'm sure there's nothing to do with the fact that Rick Degolia shares ample time in town attorney, outgoing town attorney field commerce, as Degolia helpfully searches for the next attorney to try to sanction ignoring heritage tree and screening ordinances for homeowners. Let's examine your own planning documents tonight. So much for your green initiatives to protect the canopy and ensure the pride to the other citizens when we discover that plans submitted by the Harrisons violated the heritage tree ordinance and the screening ordinance as understood by expert arborists. And we brought this up with the town arborist. She completely agreed with us. Yet Eric Harrison got himself a meeting with the town attorney during which a decision was made to continue the violations. The town arborist was overruled and body-checked into ignoring the plan's issues and totally non-conformity with the best practices of heritage tree preservation. Again, we are discussing something that occurs over and over in endless documents, not just what under discussion this evening, but others that inform the background of your fall agendas. The town arborist was overruled and body-checked into ignoring the plan's issues and totally non-conformity with best practices. And the town attorney claims that this was the town arborist's decision, yet the town arborist holds otherwise from the beginning of distorted tale to this day. The arborist has been cornered and cowed and bullied into believing she does not have the authority to enforce the ordinances. To the contrary, it is her purview, her duty, her directive as an officer with enforcement, and even arrest authority to protect these heritage trees and screening ordinance. Instead, my heavens. In my humble opinion, instead of enumerating the ways she should roll over for the outgoing attorney, I'd suggest something else. I suggested we stop the enthrall with the Harrisons. Why don't you, City Council, do the right thing and demand for the work at one fifty-six Stockbridge conducted by the Harrisons and their agents halt until real industry-standard and recognized practices for tree preservation are achieved and local ordinances are upheld? They're not just local ordinances on my bad. They are state. We humbly but firmly ask you, the Abboton Town Council, to instruct the town arborist to reverse what expert arborists clearly see as ordinance violations, which are sought for gain by private parties at our and the canopy's expense and immediately enforce the laws pursuant to this matter. Your planning document and other documents and initiatives like it have linked to and adjacent to it, and are no better than gaslighting at this point. With planning and ordinance enforcement so fragile, so contingent, so exiled from the bounds of law decency, really dies while I'm offered.
Can I just interrupt?
No, good faith, rules, laws, don't pirate.
Ma'am, ma'am.
And I...
Ma'am, ma'am.
I missed.
We normally miss, sorry.
And we are referencing a document under discussion tonight. May I not like to...
Yes, we are. One normally public comment is three minutes, so...
I gave her my three minutes.
My husband is so real fast.
We cleared it. She has nine minutes. Thank you for interrupting.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for interrupting.
You don't do that. You don't permit that.
Yes, thank you.
She has nine minutes.
So your husband can come up and speak.
I gave the bounds of my time to my wife. I cleared it with your deputy manager.
Whoever.
Are you the deputy manager?
Are you the deputy?
Did I clear it?
Is this uncomfortable?
Did I clear it with you?
The city attorney weighs on on these. I talked to the city manager.
Hey, hey, we don't want to shut you down.
Yes, we do.
You are shut.
If you would just listen for a second.
Oh, wow.
Please, please, okay? First off, we would like to have the document that you...
We will give you every document.
Thank you, thank you. Give those to the city manager. Secondly, if you're close to finishing, please finish. But if it's, if it's gonna be another five minutes, we need to move on, okay?
I think the money and time spent on these initiatives pales in comparison to what I am referencing tonight, and I think you can hold that in your mind. With all due respect. If you're not gonna have good faith processes and document submissions to really manage Stallone's town manager instead, let's save the money, hire some caterers, and all for the benefit of meeting the needs of ruling class aspirants, and put out a job request for the one position we really need at this point, an auctioneer. Now, if you would like some of the documents and other items I have prepared to submit, I am ready to do that at this time. I have even more, as you might imagine.
If you want to give them to Anthony, he'll make sure the city manager distributes it to the board.
And a picture.
There was supposed to be no equipment. There's a picture of, of like heavy equipment. They took the driveway out. They compacted the soil. They're, they're running trucks back and forth. There's an elm tree here, properly protected. The one that they lied, they said the fire department wanted down. Sally Vance, the arborist, checked, rechecked. The fire department never ruled on this. They lied to try to take the elm tree. They got caught. Sally declined their permit for the elm tree. So the elm tree is very nicely protected with a fence. But we hear the oak in the shared property line, not protected, not fenced. There's a couple of two-by-four boards. That's not a fence. We've got arborists, multiple arborists came to our length, evaluated their shop. And we got an expert arborist who doesn't have an arborist's business, and so he has no conflict of interest. He, him and his other arborists, with their report given to you, has looked at it. It's not just that the watering, they say, oh, drip water. Well, you could drip water all day. That's a lot of water, and that water will kill that tree. That tree happens to do the majority of the sweep. We told Sally, why don't they plant on their side of the driveway? Everything's solved. No danger to the oak tree, properly screened plants. The plants they're gonna plant is not gonna grow. It is organism growth. It takes twenty years to grow to the height. They built a monster thing that is thirty feet high. It will not be recovered. So Sally said, what a great idea. Let me propose to them. She never returned our call, so we went in to find out the secret meeting happened with... Or whatever secret or not, we were not invited, which is fine. But the meeting happened with the town arborist.
Speak up, gentlemen.
At the...
Of course, please speak up.
So anyway, the town arborist was, was told to do this. I went to talk to Sally this last week. She said, my hands are tied. I work for the town. The town decided. So the, the letter from Mr. Connors here said that the arborist decided. Well, it's one or the other, and we know which one it is. It's clear in the data on which one it is, who decided, and then why. Well, you can't decide. It's the arborist's job to decide. Otherwise, why have the arborists? So there is a solution to the problem. It's very simple. So they talked about that being the taking of their property. Nobody's taking their property.
They are taking ours.
But they are taking ours. And let me explain. This is really important. Mr. Connors, who, who self-claims he's not a tree expert, goes and says, well, since your tree is shared, half the responsibility is yours. But guess what? They can kill the tree by themselves, no matter how much we care for the tree.
So is that a picture in the...
There's lots of pictures. There's pictures of reports. This one is...
Yes, it's more.
Equipment. We have pictures. We'll give you everything. Anyway, so what Mr. Connors is implying clearly is that, oh geez, if, well, they're gonna build the driveway, they're gonna build this stuff. But it's your responsibility, our responsibility, to take care of the tree. So which means we can't build a structure on our side. We can't build a driveway. We have a service gate right there. So suddenly, who's the taking? It's being taken from us. The taking is on our side right now. You know, and this, this is the problem in general. This is just one instance in Abboton. We're just one neighbor. But this is happening more and more, ladies and gentlemen. There are construction setbacks for life. They are taking down stuff. They get, however they manage to do so. If you don't step up, if you don't take care of the town, this town will look like does any other town. The reason this town is less a scam.
I can say to you, the border trees are something that we have been addressing and we are putting into the updated...
Okay, so this is the shared tree. But let me tell you, it's less than fifty. In a way, we have our own truly majestic huge oak tree. All this driving of construction truck back and forth. It's scamming. I realize that. We noticed that. We saw that. It's not in action right now. That's just...
And you don't have time.
And, and they have been given this permit. Tomorrow morning, they can come and plant those twenty-four inch boxes.
On documents that are...
And if you read the, the orders...
Your business is accepted.
If they put twenty... There's no way to plant twenty-four inch boxes without damaging the truce of these oak trees. This should have never been allowed. This is not even protected. That is not allowed. How is this possible? Now, we're gonna stop, because you've got probably plenty to do. Thanks for listening to us, and I'm just, I don't know if I, do I turn it to you?
We have plenty to get all the data.
And if you are, if you need any more information to, to, to make this decision, please feel free to contact us. And unfortunately, the permit has been granted. Therefore, time is of essence.
Laws that should have been lethal to this, to this, to this execution.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say one more, just to the point of, you know, hey, I don't like to spend my time doing this. I'm sure you don't like to spend your time hearing this kind of thing. But urgency is usually at cross purposes of gentility. And this is an urgent matter, and I'm not, I'm not playing marbles here. So have a good evening. Have a good discussion.
Thank you for bringing that up, Anthony.
Thank you. Will we hear back from you, or is it just, like, what's the process? May I help?
Not on, not on public comments. The city staff and the city attorney will have to get back.
Okay. Or the arborist is welcome to talk.
Because we can't make a decision on something that wasn't called...
No, we're simply asking you to...
For me, yeah, but as in those.
Yeah, so we're just simply asking for your help to direct the town attorney to, to town arborist to worry about. That's all.
We like them here, but...
It's a simple request. We're like, it's wonderful, and...
She didn't deserve it.
She doesn't know whether, she doesn't know, she doesn't know she had the power. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know anything? Yes. B-E-N-R-E-Y-M-B-E dot com. My phone number, six eight?
Item number one, the only item.
Thank you so much.
Discussion of the general plan update, I think. Well, Lisa and stuff, you're handling this, right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So there's been a series of public meetings beginning in December of 2017 related to our current 2019 general plan update. The most recent meeting in which the council reviewed the general plan was back in September of this year. All of the elements within the general plan have been updated in track change with comments inserted based on the direction and comments received by the council at that last meeting in September. Those are the documents I want you to review in tonight. Before jumping into the summary topics within each element, I'd like to start the conversation with sort of the overarching direction of all comment that staff received from the council back in September. And that had to do with a series of goals, policies, actions, and objectives that were recommended, that were taken from other town adopted plans or documents. Some of those were carried over verbatim and integrated into the general plan. The direction that staff received was to try and articulate all of those goals, policies, and actions. Specifically, there were a total of fifty-six throughout the various elements to be more summary and broader in perspective, while still attempting to address that particular specific plans or programs' purpose, spirit, and intent, such things as the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, et cetera. So staff has taken a stab at doing that. So of those fifty-six specific goals, policies, and actions, forty-nine of those are recommended to be deleted and replaced with this broader, more summary type of language.
Could I just answer a quick question?
Sure.
As I asked you before. In your opinion, does deleting all of those recommendations make the plan more streamlined or more efficient and less confusing, or more vague and unproven for debate and controversy?
I don't think that. I think it does make it more of a streamlined document. Professionally think that the recommended updated language that we provided captures what all of those more specific policies and goals were attempting to convey without, quote, locking the town in to implementing any of those specific directives, allowing some flexibility in the future should that particular plan, such as Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, ever be updated. The broad language would still be able to appropriately capture its intent.
If we don't have, but if we felt the summarized goal did not adequately add stuff, obviously, we can ask you to add some names back in, right?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Do any of us mic?
You're welcome.
I tried to get out of his way.
Apologies.
Come in here.
Just to conclude with one last point related, related to those revisions. So as I mentioned, there were fifty-six total. We're recommending that seven actually proposed to remain. Taking another look at the way that the language was crafted, we felt that it was not specific in any implementing directives. So that is why those seven were proposed to remain. Extrapolated all of those in a separate document. It's attached with one within your packet. Without getting into each of the fifty-six, if there were any specific questions on any of those that the council had, I'd be interested to answer those.
One more question. So just to be clear, so this is, these were fifty-six additions? Because there's still a lot that's in the plan.
Yes.
You go to the end of the plan.
Yes.
And just fifty-six additions, which you're comparing to seven?
Correct. These fifty-six were just those of the hundred-plus proposed goals and policies that were taken directly from other town documents.
Because I don't know how many there are that are left, but there's...
There's still left. There's still...
Probably fifty.
Correct. I just got word that I have the consultant and physical engineer attending the meeting tonight. I just got word that he's running a few minutes late. So I'm gonna skip the noise element slides and...
Okay, I'll just make a quick comment on that.
Sure.
Because the very first comment in there, I don't think was appropriate. Because we did make some comments. I know I made several comments on the noise element, our noise ordinance. I made comments on, and actually pointed you to federal government decimal reading numbers for railroads and for locomotives idling and real car going by at a hundred feet. We talked about not only the aircraft, but the, the addition of a helicopter path now that's going back and forth over Atherton at extremely high decibels. And so we did talk about those, and I know that he's gonna talk about them and maybe he can explain, you know, his rationale, but we did talk about them, said. And I'd say, I think we said, I know I said, I thought that we should be looking at ordinance as we move forward to see if it needed any adjustments, or just put exception to your first...
Oh, the first bullet point.
The first bullet point.
Yeah, I, I see. That is incorrect, so my apologies for that. And as you can see, the subsequent bullet points actually get into some of the comments that were received, and there were updates made to the noise element, some of which have just comments inserted. There wasn't actual text changes, because we wanted to talk through how we had our expert here so that we received consensus and then update accordingly.
But, but you, but you want comments right now, I think even before the consultant gets here to talk about the details as to whether or not there was this suggestion, should we think about putting leaf blowers in the table as well? And then have something that potentially, over time, over as you know, we're looking at maybe doing some sort of regulation?
Yes. Well, we can certainly go through them, and if there's any outstanding comments that I feel would be more worthwhile for the consultant to address and myself, and to council, wouldn't mind that? And if those topics within the noise element?
Well, I should have everybody else, really. I just have a question. What, what's our process gonna be? Are we just going through the staff report? Are we actually gonna go through the plan? What is your pro, the process?
The, the staff would like, if we could, to go through the plan. This staff report was just intended to summarize sort of the key issues within each of the elements. So ideally, if the council's comfortable with, we could go through element by element. Take any direction. We can take notes and then integrate those in subsequent revised document for the next council meeting.
It's a little light.
And then you...
It's illumination.
Unfortunately, this is about as bright as it gets in here.
Yeah. Wow.
Really, here's your...
I think we're having an extra bright light.
Here we go.
Yeah.
Nice chandeliers. I think we need to dust this here. I don't think those are getting green chandeliers.
You can flip those down for us.
Is that okay?
Okay, so you're gonna, you're going through, you're gonna give your report, and then we're gonna go through the plan.
Yeah, if, if you like. Well, we can go through the reports slash plan element by element and pause for getting in conversation with the next element until we fill up the conversations.
That sounds good. I'm indifferent. I just, I'm not giving you any comments, because I'm not sure I hear you.
Okay, so starting with the noise element?
Starting with the...
Start with the noise element. It's a good place to start.
Yeah.
All right. Let's be at our noise. We do. We have Carol Goldberg here from RGD Physical Engineers, as I mentioned previously. So I have two slides on the noise element. You can go through a summary and then open it up for council discussion, questions of staff, and for the consultant as well.
If you do.
Yes. So there were comments received at the last council meeting in September. There were some questions on some data points within various tables within the noise element, data measurements as well. So we did go back and confirm with our physical engineers to confirm that those data points were indeed correct. We also added some additional descriptive text to try to better explain some of the tables, what their purposes are within the noise element, and what they are intended to convey in the future for future development. Specific comments were received regarding the noise element. One comment received is within Table One, which is a comparison table of typical sound levels and decimal readings. This is just, table is intended to just be referenced to give an idea of what different things, even different sound levels. There was a comment received that leaf blower should potentially be integrated into that reference table. That has not been done within the draft that you see, but some product thought if council does firmly direct that in consultation with our physical engineers, they've kind of given a wide estimate as to what that level may be based on the different types of models that a leaf blower may have and where that measurement location is taken. So staff would appreciate council direction. They would like us to try to drill down on that a bit more and integrate into the Table N1, the example table, so to speak, in the next draft general plan update.
So...
You mean, when you say the next, that this?
This one.
This, this one, for the next round, we can make the change.
The next round of this update.
So, you know, as I brought up, you know, I looked at some of the things that were in the table, and I compared them to federal government measurements by freight train lines that you're showing here, have a decimal level of, in the table.
We'll set that.
Okay, and the federal, you go to the Federal Rail Authority dot, the Department of Transportation dot gov, they have all these numbers, okay? So our numbers change with their numbers. They also have contours that show how far the, what the levels would be as it dissipates out, a hundred feet, five hundred feet, a thousand feet. And these numbers aren't, aren't anywhere close to that. And so I think that we really should just kind of verify some of these things. And, and as you know, we're in a air traffic area, which the, the air, the, the general plan does point out. So aircraft flying in low altitudes plus, plus the... So aircraft flying in low altitudes plus, plus the helicopters flying at low altitudes on a special trajectory that comes right across that, which I think should be shown and should be included in our sound dissipation where we say this is, you know, areas that are being impacted by heavy noise. So there's a lot of data, I don't want to waste everybody's time because we've got a very long comment section, but I think that the numbers that are in here probably could be improved a little bit in accordance with, you know, federal standards that are out there on the web and easy to get there and supported by the government and many universities like University of Purdue or Purdue University Studies.
Give me reference.
I'm happy to give you all the detail that I have that I've looked up over the last day or two and worked with the consultant and show him what I've got and, you know, listen to his comments. But I just think that our table needs to be updated and our contours need to be updated.
So you're referencing the data in table N1?
Looking at N1, yes, that's correct.
But where is the, can we just start with where the data is from?
Yeah, we can answer where the data is from, but I just wanted to also explain the purpose of it in the general plan. Obviously, a jet takeoff and a New York subway is irrelevant to Atherton.
Yes.
But it's used in this purpose for people to understand what that sound is like and not to describe all the sounds that you experience in Atherton. So people are familiar with, okay, a jet takeoff sounds like this, therefore that is one point. I understand what that decimal reading is. And that's a purpose, purely informational, just to give you a context of how loud something is. And then you explain your.
Sure. And sort of alarm will be different based on how you said.
What kind of.
Yeah.
That's pretty. The idea of the table N1, I'm sorry, Harold Goldberg with RGD Acoustics and helped prepare the background report and also make edits to the noise element. And general, that table N1 is kind of what we call thermometer, because in acoustics, we talk about decimal sound levels. And it's another number people aren't used, familiar with what they mean. So it's a way to give context to those numbers. Thirty, very quiet, or a hundred and twenty, very loud. It's to give you that kind of range of what the, what sound levels you're experiencing in your part. There are other parts of the noise element. There are some acoustical measurements that were done around town. And then there's also, and that data is in, in the noise element, measure data. I'm not sure it's in the noise element, it might be in the background report, but it's part of our work that we did. Support of it. And the, and then there's also noise contours. The noise contours are something that's required as part of the planning of, say, California. And the contours are based on projections of traffic noise. And in case of the railroad, we, part of our work is to do measurements in Atherton along the railroad. And we use that data then to project the contours throughout town.
Where's the, I don't even know what you're talking about.
There's a table in the back that shows. There's some.
There's going through the town. I see. So there's a, there's something at the end of this noise.
There's a rough part in the back and shows the railroad line and then.
Shows the dissipation.
Yep.
If I can do this, I suppose I know what you're talking about.
It's the.
From what I understand, table N1 is really of no effect for.
Well, it's helped to read.
I'm saying that it's no operational, no.
That's right, it's not a policy.
So you want to. It seems odd you're asking us a question about whether to include something on the table or anything, so it's not, it's not very, you know, in terms of actual.
Well, Jeff is how our, how our class, how our, saying we want to include leaf blowers as part of general planning as a potential nuisance. That maybe at some point we will strive, aspire to change the mound or create other ways of having our leaves mown rather than the gas power two-stroke engines. Yes, but that's one.
I might say, I said that it's like, you know, it's context. Here's, here's, this is a loud noise, it's not a loud noise. Are you, okay, you're misunderstanding as you look at the rest of the document, right?
It's not necessarily used for projecting noise levels across city. Our specific parts of the noise element, this isn't really that purpose. It's just very, to understand.
I deal with that.
Quarter of the decimal.
So it's not.
Just to, you know, feeling for what a decimal it, you know, what's twenty decimal.
Are we thirty or seventy, what's a hundred? I might have a little.
All right, okay. I think you could rip out a question perhaps and then as opposed to getting off now.
Well, I have two questions. First, for us to be able to talk about these, if we're going to include something in a general plan, if it's data, it's external data, like I think table N1 is, and I don't know if N2 is data or it's a recommendation for us, but if N1 is a data table, we should say where it's from. It doesn't say, I have no idea where this comes from. Are we making that up?
What's the source of that?
This, this was from the prior noise element.
Existing.
Yeah, existing.
So did a previous council come up with it? So somebody made it up? How would they have the experience to do that?
It's, it's common, this kind of thermometer appears a lot in literature, in the field of prior adults. So it's not uncommon. It's just designed to give the reader context of.
It has to come from somewhere, it has to come from somewhere. It's not like.
Given industry.
It's not, I understand, there's an analogy.
In some response, we got a question about the table N1. And I replied with a couple of industry standard thermometers that appeared in the one of them was from the Office of Planning and Research, General and Island. So that is available, I think. We didn't fully reference.
We should say where it's from. Okay, listen.
Oh, just, never cut to the chase. The, you know, the blue and red text kind of sets the stage, yes? But it can also then say that following data came from.
Forever?
Yeah. And then you've got your list.
So my second point, so I get it that this is a table that comes on a standard source. You should just say what that is. And then N2, is this a table that we are creating based on what we think is right?
So table N2 is the land use compatibility guidelines for community apartments. So that, that gives the, more or less the acceptability standards of noise.
Based on.
This is a table that the town is saying this is what we choose to have.
Based on, this is a table we're creating in these parameters.
That's right, although it's based largely on the, on the state guidelines for the preparation of noise levels in general plans.
Well, what figure three is sort of a similar kind of thing and gives some information about what is appropriate and what noise levels are in this case in different cities. Is that proposed to be part of the general plan now? Or is that just there for the discussion tonight?
This was just simply for reference to help further try to explain the purpose and intent of table N2. So this figure three, we could or could not integrate it into the formal general plan. Figures, figures one through three, those were all figures or are all figures taken from the state of California's Office of Planning and Research guidelines that municipalities use to help as a reference point in the preparation of general plans.
Go ahead.
Why are we using the normally acceptable threshold of five to sixty? At the, at the ground table, we're trying to reduce a normally acceptable level to lower, you know, fifty-five because the noise is disturbing. We want it this, we don't want it to be higher, we want it to be lower.
And that's how this came up, is that we talked about, hey, you know, our noise levels actually go up higher at night sometimes. And so we should probably look at this. My only comment is that if there are federal standards and like freight trains are managed by the federal government, Federal Rail Authority, their numbers should trump any number that you have here. We should have the right numbers in before we just plug in the table. And secondly, you know, there was, there was another table in the back of the old general plan that I assume will make it to the new general plan that says quiet suburban, small suburban neighborhoods should have a decimal level that is about seven fifty-five. Now we're up to seventy to seventy-five. So I realize there's. This is, so there's.
Seventy to seventy-five is one.
So I just think that my only suggestion to the rest of the council and the staff is that perhaps we should look at the noise ordinance moving forward, not to bog down the rest of this meeting with this. But noises, there are two problems that we hear about as council members all the time, or at least I do. One is traffic, the other is noise and construction's included in that, by the way. So, but that's what we hear about and noise is a big problem.
But for residential and table N2, the acceptable noise level is fifty-five or less.
Okay.
Conditionally acceptable, those are the ones where construction noise, not parties, that go on. That's fifty-five to seventy. Do you think about seventies unacceptable?
That's fine, because we're not changing it.
Correct.
So now we're saying schools, libraries, churches, we've increased it by.
Well, I think our noise ordinance says it's a social gathering on a weekend between ten and twelve. It can go up to seventy-five or eight, which is how I brought this thing up to you originally. So we just need to look at this ordinance and come back, maybe at a future council meeting.
But that would be a special event and, you know, and it's not like every day, you know, day to day out or kind of.
Just. Besides, we'll do one.
Can I make this a question? Can we, I know that they're treating great noise, can we do two electric and diesel? Just because we're kind, if this is a general plan, this is kind of a, as we move forward, it would be nice to have two different origin sounds.
Oh, you're talking about in table N1?
Yeah.
Just for additional information.
Yeah, just because people, I think this is a document, it's because the ground, that's where the border is going to. Just a suggestion. So I, I, I'm not sure about putting everything off, but I would make the change in N2 or decide to propose the change that the conditionally acceptable for residential be fifty-five to sixty-five rather than fifty-five to seventy, because when I'm looking at figure three, seventy is identified as very noisy and what's in my system is between sixty and sixty-five. It seems to me like sixty-five is a better break point for where acceptable land is and unacceptable begins than seventy. That's what it shows, aren't that, we move figure three.
And then the question is, I think the big question that the staff want us, do we want to put leaf blowers in? Now we're back to. Leaf blowers in table.
I have a quick response to this, I don't think N1 matters at all. It does so.
All, the only thing that matters is we have to attribute where the data comes from. And where our origin of complaints. But table, table N2 matters a lot.
Yeah, table N2, table N1 is simply an illustrative thing.
Go ahead.
So suggesting to change the additional acceptable to, from fifty-five to seventy to fifty-five to sixty-five?
Yeah, and I guess that means that it will be normally unacceptable to start at sixty-five. Okay.
Is that a general, not a federal?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Great suggestion.
And why is N1 your playgrounds and neighborhood parks have additional acceptable, completely struck? It's like you took down a.
Well, there's the, the normally acceptable up to seventy.
And then went straight to seven, seven point.
Yeah.
And those changes were simply just proposed to be more consistent with the state OBR guidelines, but we will certainly bring them back to, whatever the council.
Well, I thought that it appeared to me that the numbers that we had had previously were wrong for playgrounds because we were showing that schools, libraries and churches should be noisier than playgrounds and parks. That didn't make any sense.
But the noise levels were higher at the range of acceptability in residence.
Well, then previously though, the church's noise level, normally acceptable was fifty-five or less and the playground normally acceptable was seventy or less, so I just didn't make.
A comment, I think it's hard to separate schools and playgrounds because schools have playgrounds and I live right next to a number of schools and they're noisy.
We just clarify the playgrounds.
If I were, if you're federal, I would expect libraries to be quieter and the churches would be quiet except for when they're ringing the bells, right?
Yeah, we just clarify what this noise means.
Yeah, just to clarify, the purpose of table N2, it's really for the town to establish acceptability guidelines for various land use and noise. So it's a planning tool. So when you're planning a new white lane or new playground or planning new homes and requiring noise to, for those homes, it's about, it's about where the noise level should be when you develop these uses in noisy areas. So.
Using schools.
It's not, it's not meant for regulating noise sources like playgrounds, playgrounds do. It's not meant for regulating noise sources. That's more like noise ordinance.
Is the operative part that we should be focusing on the policy goals? Or what should we be focusing on as a council in line here?
Well, just table N2 is part of the policies.
I'm trying to help you out.
I think that's, it's a good discussion. I don't want to, I want to make sure when those, what the.
So what we're saying is a park should be located in an area where the ambient noise level is fifty or less. We're not saying a park should generate less than fifty DPA. That's not what this is. It's where you locate park. They make your energy decisions. But I'm going to regulate the park to stay within that range.
But this is a de-noise.
Yeah.
That's right.
Like, like, but our, the goals, the goals, the goals, the goals should be better, right? The goals and policies, which we can't put here, goals, goals, policies, those are things that actually matter. Those get folded into, sorry.
Those become, they're high, those become limits. This is, the hierarchy of, everything has to fall within the umbrella of the general plan. That doesn't mean it's specific, it's very vague on purpose. Everything within it, this is like, kind of like the maximum, it's resuming and for all these other land use issues that you're going to be faced with in the future, your ordinances have to comply with, unless you're a charter company, has to comply with whatever the maximum is in this, in the policies you adopt. That's what this is like right now, you're adopting the fifty thousand foot level overview of the whole thing. It's not supposed to be specific for each park. Each park has to go through a certain.
Look, these are the levels of noise that occur. These facilities either designed for how you develop those, which are easy to be like here.
So I would just suggest removing the word schools and just make that second category, libraries and churches. And it makes no sense.
Libraries and schools.
It's a regular. Libraries and churches.
No, I, I.
We have.
We have churches now, so we have no churches in town.
We do have churches.
We have.
Chapel.
Chapel, sacred heart.
Okay.
And the nurses.
Is that all of them?
Chapel, because we're blocking.
The church, church, sacred heart.
There is. Churches stays in.
Churches.
There's college.
Your chapel.
Yeah, there's one in Opro, Opro.
As a.
It's a.
All right, I'm ready.
All right, all right.
All of their streets is in.
Okay.
It should be.
I'm going to help you live tonight.
Okay, can you take control of this, Stephanie?
Okay, so I heard a direction to add leak blowers within table N one as an additional reference point. I have heard, um, revisions to table N two to, um, reduce the conditionally acceptable ranges for residential.
On your leak blowers, can you write gas leak blowers? That's what it is versus electric?
What about other gasoline powered appliances?
Yeah.
Enterers, mores.
I was, I was getting that.
They, that's what they're doing. How are we going to play out blowers as opposed to other devices?
It's, it's, it's good to come from somebody that.
And also sliding the stores for table N one.
That's been, all right.
Sorry, yeah, now we want to remember. Policy N one six. I just wanted to show, I understand, can I just get a little view of this? Yeah, this is consider those, consider requiring noise mitigation for private results. And we got, and L D, and L D N again, I'm sorry.
Daylight average sound. So it's a twenty-four hour noise level.
Okay. The increases that are, and then we have a list, and we've added one. Right, those new primaries that, that we had, just the, the thing at the bottom, the four point five D B As, right?
Yeah, all of it.
All of it?
Yes, yeah, I tallied those.
Okay, so where did it, what? Where did that come from? Is that, is that consistent with?
We made that suggestion, and consider adding a policy that talks about acceptability of increase in noise. The reason we did that is because, um, CECL requires consideration of increase in noise. CECL doesn't have any standards for it, but they require you consider. So as a, when, when, every time you do a, an I R, a declaration, you're looking at increased noise. Uh, yeah, a lot of cities don't have standards for it. So it helps to have a, you know, a, a standard for increase that is applied to all projects even. So it doesn't get, um, chosen every time we do, we do a project, when you review a project as to what it's, it increases.
So to, the definition of product, as you're not talking about during the construction of a product, you know, whenever the product, whenever the product is completed, it'll be an ongoing noise level. It'll be this much higher. Is that what this means?
Yeah, and, and it's a, you know, when you do a, a environmental study for a new project, you can look at the noise impacts of that project, generally on long-term operations and things. And that's what this would apply to. So if it's, for example, a new supermarket that's got moved out of equipment, if it, if it generates an increase of a certain amount, then it's significant.
But that's not going to hold the guard to have.
Let's, so let's bring it back to maybe that was an example that would be relevant to us. Like, um, mental school wanted to build a new aquatic, a aquatic center, right? Exactly, uh, and hardened field. And that would increase the noise level considerably because of the whistles and the everything like that. So that would give us a baseline to say, well, in the I R, this is kind of increasing noise. This would be a reason to decline.
Or, or mitigation.
Did what? Aviation.
Mitigation.
So sandblowing or something.
Yeah, mitigation.
But my, I, I think there's a good way to point out. My question on this one is, this is saying, consider mitigation. If the project that you're looking at, the planning process, would increase the noise five D B As or greater if it's less than sixty, right? And one D B A or greater if it's, if the future, whatever, is less than sixty-five. I don't make, am I just looking at this backwards? If it's noisier, I would think you'd want to have a reverse. If it's one D B A or greater and the noise level is going to be less than sixty, you might want to know it. But if five D B A or greater is a bigger jump, so why wouldn't that be at the higher level?
Uh, that, yeah, it's that. Increases are, when, as it gets noisy, an increase is, um, more significant than smaller than.
Obviously.
So, so that's, that's the gradation of the intent of the gradation. So at a lower sound level, a larger increase is, is louder. But at a higher sound level, smaller increase.
Is louder?
Is, is, is louder, only a smaller increase.
I see. I see, because you're already starting at a higher level.
But again, the L E N, you're right. Over what time periods?
So L E N is a daylight average sound. So it's a twenty-four hour average noise and it's a hell of deeper nighttime noises. But it's just one number that represents the whole twenty-four hour period. So it's not, it's, it doesn't.
Not a single limit.
It's not a single limit.
Not a single limit.
It does, it would though be material for things like a park field where they might have a practice five block. That actually matters a big part.
Absolutely, everything, everything that's average it. So it's a, it's a, it's an equitable way to look at the whole picture rather than just, it's something happens for a evening hour. For a phone call, for a water tap to process.
Okay.
All right, so where are our problems?
Reform the direction that we will update in the.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm really enjoying that.
Thank you. Don't worry about questions, right?
No, we're done.
Okay.
So we've done the noise, so let's see.
We're not there. We've moved out of the area.
Okay.
Or land use government?
Um, yes, I combined the introduction chapter, the introduction chapter of the Land Use Government because the comments that were received were, um, relatively minor in scope. So there was comment to replace all reference to the town from rural to semi-urcal and that change has been made, um, within the introduction. Uh, then jumping into the Land Use Government, um, all of those broader, yes.
And yet it makes sense to me, but I don't, is there a definition of semi-urcal? I mean, I don't see.
It's a price and merit to value, it's definitely.
Like a dramatic rating or just?
Yeah, dramatic rating, there really is.
Um, the rural urban fringe, semi-urban, also known as the outskirts, et cetera. Landscaping or basically county territory. Um, semi-urban is property that is on the, in, in a location that is sort of country, but is artificially considered as a countryside. It's a catch-all, it includes suburbs around farmland, village, towns, and rural areas. With a mile or two of land.
Yeah, I think that's what must be right.
Was it the urban plan or the nation area?
Oh.
Did you say urban elsewhere?
Yes.
In the last document.
Urban, yes.
And we need to take urban out.
Semi-urban and there was suburban context discussion as well.
I like the word.
I kind of makes it quite.
So rural, semi-urban, to give you the best. There have been big fights.
I guess, yes.
To obtain the perception that we are a rural.
Semi-urban.
Wait, and.
I think I know the term, I think that just, that, this.
Semi-urban.
But I'm agreeing.
There you go.
Or just will you go back?
Yeah, I'll just.
Can you move on?
Yeah, going into the Land Use Government. So, um, ten of those goals and policies have been removed and replaced with broader, uh, broader language. Um, one, I think of the, the more substantive, um, topics within the Land Use Government. There was discussion at the last council meeting regarding any scripted text and or rules or policies related to the Grand Boulevard Initiative. Um, so what this document currently does is keep the language that was initially proposed to remain, but with a placeholder, um, at the point that we distributed this was prior to your, um, meeting of last week. So there were no changes made to what you see before you. Um, but right now we have the information that was discussed at last week's council meeting. So if the council helped me, I hope. Right now it keeps, it reads as it, um, was initially proposed, um.
Yeah, I think we filled that one out.
All right, my only comment, when I made my notes, was the same as what I said at the last meeting. We agree with it, uh, and we will implement it as funding becomes available. We know that, um, I realize this is a document, it's a guiding principle and it's not regulatory, but, um, it is a state street highway. And we like state.
Okay, so we can make further revisions to descriptive texts, um, regarding the G B I, uh, to make sure that we have captured the direction that the council discussed at last week's meeting as well as make specificity that the street roadways through the G B I are state roadways and should funding become available.
Jerry. I, I have one comment on this section, which is you reference, um, in the document, the civic center in some places as the civic town center, in some places at the town center, and in many places at the civic center. And I think it should be changed to the town center since that's what we had agreed and that comes up in a lot of different places. And, and one, one place in specific is in the, uh, open space section. You referred to the change to the name of reading part to civic center part, which I don't have a problem with, but I think it should be town center.
Um, in the main side.
Is that reading part?
Yeah.
So I think it's my question, yeah, did, did we make a decision to change it? Did reading part, no.
Town center, yes.
Town center.
Right.
Does this, does this, nothing do?
How that comes up in the, uh.
Comes up in Land Use.
There are, there are certain titles that just. In the Land Use Government, in the text. Okay. Um, I'm getting there. Good. It's on page twenty-two of two eighty-four.
I don't have that.
This is the actual text of the.
I'm in the text, but it says L U something, L U fourteen or fifteen.
No, it wasn't, yeah. So it comes from the L U two or then on the next.
Right, that's L U fourteen.
Okay, so down in the bottom paragraph, at least in the one that I've got, you know, unfortunately put in the blue line, you know, traditional transportation system. So it's getting into kind of, it's Land Use, but it's put in here about things, about the climate action plan and stuff like that. But it is in the Land Use section. And it says that, um, and I just didn't, I didn't agree with the words that were there. We are recommending people, we want to be Cal Green. We're, we're offering recommendations to move people, but this thing says we're, we're, you know, incentivizing people to design net zero homes. And I just didn't recall that we ever had agreed that we were doing that. I realize we're asking people to make energy efficient modifications above and beyond. We may, you know, make recommendations that they should reach or get rid of gas and things like that. But I didn't, I, I, that sounded a little strong to me. Um, and I just didn't remember that we had agreed with that. Maybe I, maybe I missed.
So all of the language regarding net zero energy within the climate action plan, uh, none of it is mandated. It's all voluntary, um, so we can certainly change the word, should, like, change the word incentivized to be more consistent with that strongly suggested encouraging type of language.
Encourage or encourage, things like that, I think there's good.
That was some of this language taken from the, um, action.
I, incentive, incentivizing, um, green building was a suggestion, not an implementing program. So yes, but we can change one here on page L U fourteen.
Also in, in Land Use, um, Stephanie.
Yes.
Um, and so it would be either here or it could be later on. And the element that we're not looking at there is that we passed a law a few years ago to allow people to subdivide to point eight-five with an acre. You have a table here, one, three, et cetera, but we didn't allow people to go below point three or point eight to point eight-five to build something that's affordable or to rent it. And they had to agree, so we should probably have that in there. And I think it would help in the housing element, but it is something that we agreed to.
Yes, density bonus. So we'll add some language, make sure it's consistent with the ordinance that was adopted a few years back.
Yeah, I think it needs to, it's like the density bonus version.
Yeah.
And not just change that table. Go ahead.
Yeah, it should be pretty clear though.
We want to get all the ready.
All this discussion about solid waste and recycling, if we were to make a change in our contract, would that, about this, would that be active?
No, that, that, our requirements for diversion remain the same, our obligations to the.
Even where they haul the waste and all that?
Excuse me?
Even where they haul the waste and all that?
Um.
It's very scripted about.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's very specific.
For that part, yeah.
If we were to get in touch, I could be an actor.
No, I don't know where the green waste carries their waste.
I believe that they should times, times the, currencies.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We just need to show that they're not.
Well, that we're diverting and that we're, and we're.
The schedule just adds up today.
And we're compliant with all current state laws.
You're going into a suitable, so you're not specific.
Yeah.
Suits are very, very. Stephanie, I've got a comment on L U twelve. In the carryover paragraph, or the top, the first paragraph on the page, you remove something at the end of that paragraph. And so there's just an inconsistent sentence. The, the last clause is, which will include open space and gardens.
Or towns.
And I think it should just be, take out porch, all of which, so it's open space and gardens to function as the new town center part.
We've got Alson Land Use. That moves to some circulation elements. So we have some reference within the circulation element, also regarding the Grand Boulevard Initiative. So I'll carry over the direction that you just discussed, um, the Land Use, make sure it's internally consistent. Um, some other changes that were made, we added a definition of complete streets. Those in the background, and then the policy to help set the stage of what that policy was intended to, um, address. We also updated, um, reference to Caltrain rail service to be what is happening under existing conditions and how the town may want to consider any future improvement, um, without specifying what those may be. There was comment received, um, regarding street classifications. Um, so within circulation element, I think direction two, um, was noted as C I R, page eighty-three. Um, that page includes a table of the major streets within town and their various classifications. Um, those streets that are, are very highway, industrial. Um those streets that are a very highway, industrial, or a collector's street, again, those street classifications are designated based on traffic volumes, traffic per street with design standards, et cetera. Comment received in the last council meeting uh was for staff to evaluate potentially changing both Selby and Stockbridge from what's currently proposed um as local streets to collector's streets. Um so a little bit of um background and evaluation research that we determined and can consider, and like to discuss that further. Caltrans does designate both of those streets, Selby and Stockbridge, as collector's streets based on their traffic volumes. Um by having them dedicated as collector's streets, uh it may make them eligible for future federal funding, however, that would be independent of what the general plan design base en masse.
Wait, let me just, so they may be eligible for funding because Caltrans considers them right as collector's streets, and it's irrelevant what we decide. That's what I thought.
And if we decide what is a super.
No, they're.
Right.
Right.
So as. So um so I I I agree with the designation of these of those two streets and possibly including that in emergency, and I know that you're into that. Um I did, in the Menlo Park Plan that was circulated a while ago, um you know, they're designating, uh and since we have a designation, when we have these lists, and we now have school collectors and things like that, Laurel is designated as a collector in the Menlo Park Plan, and we don't have that street, and it is a collector, or at least a school collector, because there's a lot of school traffic. And so I I think it should be at least considered for being collector to be consistent with the other half of the street. And and then there was the table, uh which is on page, well, table thirteen, that's in documentation. And when we have school collectors and school access, I realize some of these side streets are small and things like that, but a s- a school access lane or a school collector ought to have bike lanes driving it, because that's where the kids ride bikes, especially if they cross the schools. We're designating that we're putting bike lanes on those streets, and to have a table in there that says not applicable doesn't make any sense to me.
Just to point a clear question. So the school collector does have to win the designation for the installation of bike lanes.
Right.
Well, for the school local, because it's narrower than width, and in being more of a local street, the designation of bicycle on that route would might be shared use.
It would be a share on that, you should say something.
Yeah, so I mean, because it's a narrow street, you have shared use facility.
Right.
Um but one of the key aspects of that school access uh lane, the local street, is the provision of the desire to provide uh pedestrian facilities.
All right, well, I'll be the key micro recommendation, but I think that personally that so the school collector then, you know, if Laurel is a school collector, which we mean it is, then then we should just identify and say collector. Rick, you have a comment?
Um, yeah, two things. I I don't think that Stockbridge should be included as a collector. Uh I I I find for Selby, if we decide to do that, I actually think that residents, and Selby would be pretty upset about it, but it it does, I mean, uh the definition of a collector is that it provides both land access and traffic circulation service within residential areas, and um it's, does even, given that, it's still designed to carry through traffic. I don't think that's true with Stockbridge. I think that is true with the Selby, but I do think people would be upset about it because they don't, that way that people live on that street.
No.
But but it goes from, you know, all the way down to Alameda, Alameda, and so I think it is a collector.
Don't we have, did we use car counts, like vehicles per hour? The last time we had a discussion about this and said, protect the lives and collectors of those streets, why do they have collectors? How would a car count show? Do we qualify, correct you?
Oh, I think that that's why the conference had it designated as such, is based on the vehicle, so the volumes are there, but.
But the volume on Stockbridge is definitely less than Selby.
It could be less than Selby, but if you're looking at what those volume metrics are, so even in this table?
I don't know what the reference that this is.
Uh sorry, table thirteen, and it gives a sense of how many vehicles a day.
Table thirteen comes from this TJKM.
TJKM, that's from the study that.
Right.
So the capacity listed for your local streets, the desire is to have less than thousand people. As you migrate up to the collector, there's uh, you know, between twenty-five hundred to um. Well, I mean, it's a pretty large rate, but.
Yeah, but what does Stockbridge?
It's definitely, yeah.
I would I would guess that Selby meets that criteria, but I would guess that Stockbridge doesn't.
Did you say it was a doubt?
Well, just the traffic count, you just compare.
How would you designate Park and Emory, Park between Old England and Emory, and Emory between Park and Elkhorn? That is, how would you?
A material for fifteen minutes a day, the rest of the time.
And and Alejandra, coming from Elgin to Emory.
Well, the the recommendations that we got from TJKM were to designate those as a school recognizing the fact that there's a school traffic or children and trying to provide pedestrian facilities for.
They're likely running cars, uh carloads.
But we don't have, uh I don't think we have enough room there to put in the bike lanes that would conform with a school collector.
Right.
But that's why I suggested Laurel, there is a school on Laurel called the Tippi School, and there is actually sidewalks on the Menlo Park side, and there are bike lanes on both sides. The channels on Stockbridge are.
And it's a through to Menlo, Elton.
Uh not not Laurel, when it goes to Ravenswood.
Right, I was thinking of Laurel. Yeah, oh, okay.
So.
Laurel.
Well, Laurel. Why are you looking at a part of comment and a question for Mr. Tom? The comments are really like the level service stuff about Seaport. I think that seems great, talking about a project outside of town, if you have the facts of town. This could help us in any way legally with that language.
No, not that I know of, but the planner might know of something, right? I mean, it's really just a, it's just a way to tell you what you already know, that intersection is terrible, this part of this is terrible, and but it's just a way to, planner chooses to to look at, do you need to do something to the intersection?
Well, we're talking about adding a paragraph about Seaport specifically, talking about projects could make it worse, you know, it's.
So so the thought is, if this is in our general plan, in Menlo Park, Brooklyn City, or Nation Service Station, we're considering developing, and that's going to have an impact on the structure of structural intersection. We haven't identified acceptable level of service in our general plan, and so to make that worse, we put our hand out and ask for some mitigation. So the thought, it it might indeed make a difference, or is it going to say anything or anything under Seaport, is it going to say anything, anything legal, you know?
We do. We've done it before.
I think it's great.
Facebook gave us, Facebook gave us money to mitigate marginalism, marginal.
Right, right, right.
All right. We go, continue on?
Let's go to my little best. Part three hundred ninety-eight page report.
Um so just to wrap up, I heard conversation about land use classification for Laurel school collector.
I believe it's justified, y'all have to look at that, but I don't think you would consider it, consider it, based on the the issues that we've discussed, yes.
And Selby and Stockbridge as well?
I'm I'm not in favor of Stockbridge.
Yeah, I'd like to hear the chat, yes.
I'm in favor of.
That's true.
I'm in favor of.
Okay, so before back to the back to the street sign standards.
You don't say, you know, about. Is there anywhere in this document? I think not.
Yeah, we do.
But the goals we say were. Something we're trying to.
And a question about the Stockbridge. Are you, is it a merit?
Yes.
A question about the Stockbridge, are you uh thinking the entire role of the Stockbridge?
Well, Camino to to the Alameda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially for just, especially when I look at the other streets that are called collectors, Oak Grove to the east of Middlefield, I mean, come on, I understand it is.
No, it's not east of Middlefield, it's city limits.
Look right here.
You're looking at TJKM, that's irrelevant.
That's, well, okay, we could look at Watkins, it's not a heavily traveled.
I don't think.
Okay, we can look at Glenwood, it's not heavily traveled. So all I'm saying is, I think that if we're going to do it based on residents, are there residential homes there and people who don't want to be called a collector?
Sure.
We don't want to take a poll on every street.
Watkins is more heavily traveled than Stockbridge, but we have to have the traffic counts. I don't know how we can make a judgment without having the traffic.
Wait.
To answer your question, yes, we do have a policy that speaks to limiting traffic in support of.
Oh, which one is it?
Uh it's policy circulation five point two, so it's on page um cert ninety-one. We also talked about it um in the background section.
By the way, in that policy five two, you have a typo, it says by supporting towns efforts, I think we made by supporting the towns, probably a plus for these.
Moving to the land use element, the space and conservation element.
Oh, before we go there, let's see if we have any public comments that we covered. See, I'm.
Way to run the meeting. Back to the open space.
Before we do, I just ask a question, you you had added a paragraph in the beginning of the circulation element under background, which referenced the Bay Area, the planned Bay Area twenty forty.
Yeah.
Which includes the sentence, or two sentences, that say, over the next twenty-five years, the Bay Area is expected to grow by an estimated two million people because of projected growth and growing economy of area, it needs to provide more housing and transportation choices. The plan was adopted in two thousand thirteen by APEC and FTC, okay, I I don't know why we need to include that. My wish.
Be endorsed by.
It's not gonna, we're not, we don't expect to grow, and we do say that, that we expect there to be no growth. And.
And in fact, the the old document points out, especially housing element, we're talking about, that we've gone down, and so we'll have to see where we are when we update the housing element, but we're not wrong in this as one of our issues with APEC. They said it was going to grow, and that's why your housing element numbers are going to go up. And then they also said you're going to have all these jobs, and of course, there's no
So I think the planned Bay Area was added just because it also was larger and relevant in terms of encompassing the regional long range transportation plan, but I sound like I'm hearing is just removal of any reference to planned Bay Area.
Well, I I didn't, I don't have a judgment on whether we should reference it, it sounds okay to me, I just didn't like the idea of planning to the APEC uh growth statement, so those two sentences.
Is it referencing, Stephanie is referencing something outside of our sphere of influence, or is it, she can't do it?
I I I think the idea is, we're implying in fact that planned Bay Area's projections of the town are going to come true, we're not going to grow, so if planned Bay Area says, this is what the region is going to do, it's kind of a development, obviously, we're not going to do it.
Solution's scratch.
But we do want the planned Bay Area, it's not, that go there.
It doesn't have to be in all the constitution.
Well, they're going to tie the course down for the for the housing element, where it's going to tie that. For housing per projections population. Yeah, in our population.
It's actually.
It's progress.
So I do have, I apologize, I was taking a committee.
Oh, that's all right.
Um so traffic counts stated by twenty fifteen, Stockbridge from Alameda to Ellis Buldes to Selby was twenty-eight eighty-seven.
Okay, that's only one rank of it, that's not to the whole, as far as I'm asking.
Uh I have a count between Austin and Alameda, thirty-one twenty-nine. It's a little higher. Selby is higher at thirty-seven ninety-two.
So they cut down Stockbridge on ECR and uh swing over to Selby, and they'll all the way to Alameda.
They're trying to avoid the intersection.
Yeah.
Might be.
You know.
Well, when Selby traffic also leads, I think that's a school.
It is, yes, yeah, but some people go down Stockbridge, they go to the school, and they just come over.
And then any other question on on Watkins, is that thirty-one?
And that is just a short, well.
What about the Selby that's perpendicular to, you know, it goes, it goes from Selby to Avenue.
No, that's what I was talking, the the one that goes from Selby to Avenue is thirty-seven ninety-two. Uh actually.
Selby, that's at thirty-seven ninety-two, but when then they take the ninety-degree turn.
If you are going from Selby down to Alameda, it's over fifty-six seventy.
Wow.
So the.
The dogleg.
So the dogleg that they have in this report is showing.
That's Selby to Avenue.
Okay, so we can look at the traffic.
I can forward you a map, this is eleven twenty fifteen.
And you know.
Yeah, by the way, I had a real question about the traffic count, it's not pretty, they they really.
This is pre rationalist.
So why don't we go on to open space?
Um no, no substantive changes to the open space element, it's right, you know, technical.
Good job. Excellent. Thank you.
Couple of things in the city element. So there was a comment received regarding the warning spill that's installed at the water facility at the end of Walsh Road. I had a conversation with Menlo Park Fire District uh this morning about that. Um what may have been warned me is that therefore has discussed uh the possibility of having that sirens system upgraded, the whole system upgraded, but that there hasn't been any affirmative decisions or direction as to whether or not that will happen or not. So that was the update that I received, and the language in the general plan talks about the existing signal, um and to reinforce that, so um if the council wants, we can update the language to include the um current activities that are being considered right now.
What is that?
About the warnings, the warning signal?
No, but what, I know what the warning signal is, but what is being considered?
Um what they told me is they're potentially upgrading the system from a town center to more of a voice automated.
This is the fire department?
Yes.
Yeah, we we spoke jointly about that, gentlemen, joining being in either project or.
Yeah, we, we spoke jointly about it, the terminal joint being kind of their project, they were, we had reservations about it, so.
The syst, the system in play does not work.
Well, you don't, it's not easily heard.
I did, it doesn't work at all, and that's what the district is determined, so they're looking at alternatives, even drones.
Yeah, I mean, I remember when they, uh, just first installed it, and we went up there, and, you know, we had the, we were just having a ceremony a few, you know, some years ago, this will be that, that's down, you know.
So we shouldn't be putting things in the general plan that there's a hope and dream of the fire district.
Whoa, yeah, we don't.
Okay, we have one reference to the warning siren on page CS one thirty.
Right.
Uh, it's intended to just describe what the existing conditions are as that siren.
Well, it says it to be active.
We do have a sense of talk about that, they're working on a upgrade, but.
Well, it says the police is working, the police department is working, it's not.
And they are working with the fire district, but they're not moving.
I, I would take that sentence out, yes, definitely.
Yeah, they're working collaboratively.
Yes.
Why do we discuss tsunami, so, just, that's not something I worry about, it's the way.
Some of the backdrop information in community safety comes from those O P R guidelines, you have to talk about certain.
Well, that's a new section.
So we go through a discussion. We are not at risk.
Yeah.
Which, you would never invite to do or risk.
There you go.
We had forty. We had forty, did they?
Yeah.
So, I, I only comment on this was that the, um, you know, as you know, when we had our original plan, which was done a number of years ago, that's really, that was pre-Cert program, pre-ADAP program, and the ADAP program now is working very smoothly with, with the direction of the police department and working in conjunction with the fire district, and so, you know, a reference of what they do and that we depend on them. Uh, and actually, we've been funding them through our police budget, I think is something that should we make comment about. Because we are required, you know, we are, that is a big part of our safety and our residential safety.
So we did talk about the ADAP program, um.
Yeah.
In the background. Keep that discussion up.
I've got a comment on.
No, no.
I've got a comment on open space that jumped over, so.
Oh, back to open space element, okay.
But if, if you've got more on safety, y'all just wait, I'll hold it.
Um, I do have one more topic.
Want to finish safety?
Or actually, two, I should say. Uh, the next comment wa, that we received, um, had to do with wildland fires, so again, I follow that with Menlo Park Fire District, um, in conversation with the fire marshal. So the town is not, um, there was a, excuse me, let me back up, the specific direction regarding, uh, wildland fires was that state should evaluate tree canopy as an identified hazard. And so following that now with Menlo Park, um, Fire District was that, it's noted that the state does, um, map Attleton as a quote, community at risk, but not a map jurisdiction under the provisions of what they call the WUI, or the Wildland Urban Interface Zone. Um, the recommendation of the fire marshal on this matter, to whether or not to formalize, um, tree canopy as a central wildland fire issue uh, within the general plan, uh, was to not mandate such requirement, primarily based on two factors. One, by doing that, we triggered the need to evaluate other town, uh, associated ordinances such as marriage tree ordinance, and what that changes to that, that may need to be made in order to be consistent with that finding. Um, secondly, they had hesitation on, um, mandating the language and how that language would read. Uh, it's their opinion that if that was to happen, that could potentially impact homeowner insurance or properties, uh, residential properties that fell within that realm. Um, I think it's worthy to note, though, that the county has adopted a vegetation management plan that Menlo Park Fire District does follow, and is actively encouraging town residents to incorporate into their designs. So while not mandated, it's something that is, um.
Forgot.
Okay, correct.
And probably there's nothing on this.
Don't get on that page.
There is, there is not, so. So that, that background was just, uh, further reference, um, if you wanted to change it.
It's not, it's not proposed to the.
It's not, not proposed. It was, it was a comment that we received at the last reading, so we're just following on.
It, it wasn't proposed to the, it was just a comment.
Right, well, I, I, I brought it up because there, there are rhetoric from certain board members about are of high risk, and that's why I said they could check with the fire district. Because it does have that following effect.
We could add supporting language to the vegetation management plan, um.
I think we're okay.
I think we're, I think we're good.
Got it, that's it, okay. Um, anything further on that topic?
Well, no.
No, Rick wants to go back to the open space.
I could just, one more point in the community safety, uh, there was a comment, we have a map in the community safety diagram that, um.
Show the emergency routes.
For the emergency routes, um, and, correct, uh, map emergency route. And there was a comment on, uh, why Stockbridge and Valparaiso were not included in those maps. Um, it sounds like, we need to Menlo Park Fire District this morning, um, as well as our police department. There's a project currently underway called Zone Haven, where all of the evacuation maps throughout the county are currently being reevaluated based on, um, hazard zones. Uh, and it sounds like both Valparaiso and Stockbridge are within their current draft to be updated. Uh, we just haven't received a copy of that, they plan to, um, distribute those, they're telling me by the end of the year. So the staff recommendation would be, of course, for our general plan, associated, um, community safety map to be updated in accordance with any evacuation route map that would then be likely presented to the council and adopted.
Yeah, my other comment was why not Valparaiso as well?
Yes, I know that, Valparaiso, Val, Valparaiso.
Okay, there were the three. Completely accessories.
Great, I can't imagine, they didn't mention any others to me, but I haven't seen the map, so we would review that, um, as we go, as we file. Okay.
Can we go back to?
Open space, yes.
Going backwards.
Rick asked the question, if you could. I, I had, so I, I have two comments. One is there's, this is open space in the goals. Uh, page OSC nine twenty-three. We have a proposed new goal, which is OSC two, which says, protect and enhance the existing oak, wildland character of the town. Oak woodland character of the town, right, and I don't know what that, I mean, we haven't, and oak woodland is defined, but I haven't seen it defined anywhere. It, it's capitalized for them, and we have, we also, we do have OSC two-three, which is enforce the heritage tree ordinance and tree preservation guidelines and standards. To me, I don't think we need the other, I don't know what it means.
Oak woodland character. That's the rule.
And then, so it's an oak woodland.
Definitely, you have wood in.
This is defined on.
It's defined on page thirteen?
One thirteen hundred.
Thirteen in the total pack?
OSC one thirteen.
Yeah, mine is so nicely numbered. Mine is perfect. Will be inspected in the, or, yeah.
Actually, I'm, I'll say. It's one fourteen, under a forest, um, some topic forest.
I see. Coastal oak woodland, okay.
Yeah, coastal oak woodland, on that, other.
Okay, I missed that definition. If we make it coastal oak woodland, I'm fine. And then I have one other question, which is policy OSC four dot two, which the proposed policy says, the town will require construction projects to stop if archeological or paleontological resources are uncovered during grading or other on-site excavation activities once the resource, and blah, blah, blah. I'm not sure why we need that.
Oh, it's state law.
Not, because it is state law, it's a year.
Right.
Highlight, I, my intent was just to highlight it.
It was.
Well, there's a lot of state laws. We should probably add a couple hundred other goals, policies.
Have we ever found just adorable Indian artifacts and bones here in town that we're aware of, where we had to stop construction?
No, some, um.
Do you find them?
Lindenwood artifacts.
Usually they're by waterway, they're, um, buried in the landscape.
I just was asking, there may be.
It's happened.
Maybe over by the city center.
It's happened, I've heard the people pushing stuff out in the.
So you want to know that?
It really happened.
Okay, policy OSC four dot two, just be very good.
Did you say you're moving in? It's still a pause.
So we're ruling, and we, we put statements as we follow state law as required.
Yes, good idea.
Is that it?
That it?
Is that it, the council?
Oh, yeah.
So it comes down.
So I, I, I do have a question, a lot of processes, back to you. Do you want staff to incorporate those things where it is definitely consensus forward, remove the rail lines right down that sort of stuff? Or continue to include all of that rail line change, and just give it to that?
Yeah, I, I think the only thing, kind of, we didn't, kind of, the consensus on maybe there's more what has to do with the characterization of some streets.
I think it might be updated, will we update the traffic management one?
And I think we've cut this meeting in half, if we actually have eight numbers.
You do, the mayor asked.
I've got page numbers.
He's finally, finally.
There's two different sets. There's two different sets.
All in favor?
I always do this.
Anthony, did you get that?
Anthony, we weren't.
Understood.